And Bill Swelly.
It looks like his audio just got connected, so Bill, we can see it. We'll just wait to get you unmuted there.
There's Lori. It's Bill now. Okay, Bill's unmuted.
Okay, I think we're good now. I'm gonna share my screen and Phil, you can get things going here.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and we'll open with the pledge allegiance. The flag, our pledges they do to the flag, United States of America. Okay, like the minutes to reflect that we held it a virtual executive session on April 14th. For administration to give the board updates on the status from the state and what this was regarding this crisis situation. Are there any public comments? I believe the procedure we did last time was to, if folks had a question, they should type their name and Mary Jean would unmute them, then they can ask their question.
I'm not seeing anything, Phil.
Okay, okay, move on then. Enrollment or new packet? The next item we have is the approval minutes of the last meeting, the meeting of March 12th and April 2nd.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Was there a second?
Holly, second.
Okay, thank you, Holly. Any discussion? Is Carolyn able to do that or no?
I'm not sure Carolyn is unmuted, so why don't you do it?
Okay, Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Swelly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Next we have business and finance reports. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve items one through six under the financial.
In a second. Thank you, Shana. Any questions or comments on the business and finance? Okay, roll call again. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Swelly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Dr. Bubala?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
No.
Myself, yes. Thank you. Next we have superintendent report.
Motion to approve, number one.
Second.
Okay, just some commentary on that. In the letter, there's a comment about if she should decide to change her mind. That was provisioned in a previous collective bargaining agreement. It's not in the current collective bargaining agreement. If we do this, it should be approved on the condition that is she cannot change her mind on this and that she can't be tracked it.
And she understands that.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Swelly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Dr. Bubala?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
Oh, I'm, yes.
And myself is a yes.
So I just, I want to thank Mrs. Hurst for all her years of service, for all the children whose lives that she touched. We're very grateful.
Thank you.
So I do have an update for everyone, but I'm going to do it at the end of the agenda because we want to make sure that we can get through as much of the agenda as possible. So I will have an update and a PowerPoint, but I'm not gonna do it now.
Okay, thank you. We'll get back to that then. There were no committees, I believe, that met in between?
That's correct, but we do have a curriculum committee meeting scheduled. It will be a Zoom meeting. The link will be on the website and it will be Monday, the 27th at 5:30. And that will be a curriculum committee meeting.
As I said before, I won't be able to make it. I'm working night shift.
Okay, thank you. The next item we have is our new business. The business account is there for your review. Item two, we have the report of the independent auditors. I believe they were joining us tonight.
Yes.
That's correct.
I can unmute him.
So we're gonna go ahead and unmute Mr. Doherty and he is gonna share a few comments with the board and the public regarding the audit results.
Good evening, everyone. Everybody can hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very good. Yes, I'm here to present the audit report for year ended June 30th, 2019. Of course, as most of you are aware, because you've been on the board, our responsibility as the auditor is to issue opinion on the financial statements and your objective, of course, is to get a clean or unmodified opinion. And that is what we issued this year, a clean opinion, essentially meaning that we've audited the financial statements of the district and we believe that they're materially accurate, complete, and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Just to briefly go over some of the numbers here, as we normally do. In the general fund, which is our main operating fund, we took in revenues of 47.9 million. We expended 48.1. We had a decrease in fund balance of $185,000. Our fund balance at June 30th, 2019 was 4.7 million, of which 2.5 million has been committed for future pieces of obligations. We had budgeted to spend 1.7 million of the fund balance, but we actually only spent 185,000. So we had a very favorable variance there. In the capital projects fund, which is a fund that's designated for capital-related projects, improvements, and purchases, we had a fund balance at June 30th, 574,000, the decrease of 657,000. Revenues of approximately 13,000 was interest earnings and the expenditures of 670,000 were for work on the consolidation. Our debt service fund, which is a fund that designated for the repayment of debt, we took in 3.6 million. We expended 3.6 million. And typically, that's just an in-and-out fund. We typically don't carry a fund balance there. Our food service fund, one designated for the food service operation, we had a net position at June 30th, 2019 of 458,000. Our net position decreased by 33,000, but there was zero transfer from the general fund. And if you recall, we've had several years where we've had to move significant amount of money over into the food service fund. So to be down only 33,000 and not have had to transfer money is very, very good compared to the prior year. When you look at it, we actually had a net increase last year of 90,000, but that included a general fund transfer of 176,000. So all in all, I think, you know, we did see some strong improvement there and I know that's been an area of concern for the last several years for the district. So hopefully, we continue to move in that direction and again, it's a very, it's a very big positive. Our internal service fund, which accounts for the self-funding of the unemployment compensation, we had a net position at June 30th, 13,000. It's a decrease of 13.5,000. Overall, our debt at June 30th was 11,390,000. We're on track to have that fully paid by fiscal year 2027. Our pension liability, which we like to bring up only because it has to be included in the financial statements, it was 68.5 million. It's actually a decrease of 4.6 million over what it was the prior year. And I'm assuming that's because we had pretty good investment returns there in the fund, which obviously next year, depending on how this year ends. But I mean, as it stands right now, I'm sure that number's gonna increase significantly. Our single audit, we're also responsible for auditing the federal funds of the district. We had no findings related to that portion of the audit. You'll recall, last year, we did have a finding related to the meal counts, which we recommended that some procedures be implemented. The district implemented those procedures and they were very effective and we had no finding, repeat finding there. So again, you know, improvement in the process and it alleviated the issue from the year before. So all in all, I mean, I think that the district is in good financial condition. And I think that's, you know, when you see that we anticipated spending 1.7 million and we held it to 185,000, I think that really shows from the board's standpoint, from the administration's standpoint, you know, some real good fiscal stewardship and making sure that that's, you know, that we're holding things in check and we're living within our means. So I think, you know, again, it's, you know, a little bit not as good as a break-even year, but still not a bad year. And we're still able to maintain that 4.7 million fund balance. There's any questions? I'd be happy to entertain those.
Mike.
Any other questions?
Hey, Bill. Thank you, sir. You too. I wish, I wish it was in person, though.
Yes, sir. I agree.
Any else have any questions?
Not so much a question, but I do think it's worth clarifying just because of the discussions that have been happening a month or two ago. This is our local annual audit. This is not the state audit that's happening that happens every, you know, four or five years. So we have this audit done every year. The results are publicly available on the website, but this is not the one that's being done from the office.
And just thank you to our administration and our business office in particular for putting this together. You know, as Mike had said, it's commendable clearly that we held the line on spending in a big way. And so thank you to our whole team for delivering that. And it was great to have an audit that had nothing called out in it. So thank you.
Yes, like we echo that, those comments. And, you know, as a board member, we've been wondering the effect of having fewer cafeterias. I mean, three fewer cafeterias than we did a couple of years ago. And I think probably the small deficit that we showed compared to the pushing $200,000 deficits in prior years is a result of having fewer cafeterias open. Now, food service. Okay, no more questions or comments. Can we have a motion to approve the audit? Motion to approve.
Second it.
Second. Thank you.
I did. Phil Widener did.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any other questions on it? Okay, your roll call. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Swelly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Dr. Bubala?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Okay, the next item is the proposed final budget. This is not really a final budget, but the first proposed, which we do at this point to meet state guidelines for presentation. I'm sure Shana will tell you that this can change a lot between now and when we have to approve the actual but final budget before June 30th. Shana, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I'll just start by thanking Mike Doherty for joining us tonight. I appreciate his flexibility. That's certainly a different procedure than what we're all used to. So I appreciate him taking the time to share the results of the audit with us this evening. I'm gonna attempt to transition here and share my screen, so bear with me. And hopefully, you will very quickly be able to see the PowerPoint presentation, which is a 2021 proposed budget. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Correct, very good. Okay, so I'm just gonna step through some very top lines. You know, as Phil mentioned, the purpose of today's meeting is really to just get some of the very preliminary information in front of the board as well as the public. So tonight, we're adopting what's referred to as the proposed final budget for the 2021 year. And as Phil mentioned, at this point in time, there are a number of unknowns. We're gonna talk a little bit more about that just so that everybody understands that we're in a very unique situation financially. And we're gonna talk a little bit more about what's contributing to that. But you'll also see that there are a number of other dates that I've included here just to kind of give you an idea of what the timeline looks like over the next few months. So we're gonna come back in May at the board meeting on the 14th to do a deeper discussion of the key highlights from the 2021 budget. And then the PDE deadline for the proposed final is actually at the end of May. So that's really what we are here to discuss tonight is the proposed. On June 11th, we are targeted to have the board approve the final budget, which has to be submitted to PDE by June 30th. So really, none of that timeline has been affected or changed as a result of the school closures. The school districts across the state of Pennsylvania have been instructed to work against the same timeline that was originally established for this calendar year. So as Phil mentioned, changes can be made and will be made to what we are going to discuss tonight. So again, this is just kind of a first foot and a look at what we're looking at as the year, at the year ahead. So let's just talk briefly about some of the things that are affecting the financial position going forward. First, it's important that everybody understands that the 2021 budget is going to be significantly affected by the COVID-19 pandemic and the associated closure. The state mandated closures are gonna have an impact on both state and local revenues. We're gonna talk about that briefly here in just a second. But the magnitude of those changes is yet unknown. So as everybody has, you know, quickly realized as we've gone through this unprecedented time together as a country, we are learning new information on a regular basis and the budgetary process is not immune to that. So just to kind of highlight a couple of key points where we anticipate that we will see some impacts on the revenue side for the 2021 year. First off, you know, you can imagine that the impact of having sales in all aspects of industry, the sales being down have a direct impact on the revenue that the state is able to take in. And then that in turn becomes the revenue sources that we see through basic ed funding, as well as the other subsidies that we see both at a state as well as a federal level. We also know that as unemployment continues to climb, the local earned income tax is going to be impacted directly. So that really is a key contributor to the local component of taxes. The dollar impact of those two areas is unknown at this time. The guidance that we are starting to receive is for us to look at 2008 when there was a similar downturn in the economy. And that may be our best estimate at this point in time as to what we could have heard going forward. I anticipate that we are going to have more information over the coming weeks and that will definitely be something that we will talk in more detail. On May 14th. So let's just talk some more specifics. So the figures that we've put together at this point in time have budgeted expenses for 2021 at 50 million, 536,000 and change. The total budgeted revenue at this point in time is about 48 million. Please keep in mind that no adjustments have been made to that revenue number at this point in time. So what do I mean by that? We have not yet estimated the impacts of the COVID-19 closure on that budgeted revenue number. So I will definitely be coming back with different numbers on the revenue side. And then obviously, we're going to have to be looking at how do we make the necessary adjustments on the expense side to be able to combat the anticipated revenue reduction. What I've tried to show here, and this is very similar to a slide that I showed last year. It's important that as we think about budgeted expenses, we have a broad understanding that a large portion of the district's expenses are fixed. What does that mean? Those numbers are determined in many cases contractually. So if you look at our wage component, that is the direct reflection of the number of people that we have working here in the district and what their wages are and what the contractual increases are that are projected for wages. And then corresponding to that is gonna be all the different components that fall into our benefits. So I've listed a number of them there. I think we've captured the vast majority of the different benefits that fall under that umbrella. But between wages and benefits, that accounts for 71% of the district's budget. The three that are listed below, that obviously are much smaller components, but again, are fixed costs. So debt service represents the costs that we have associated with outstanding bonds that does not include any new issuance. Because at this point in time, that process had been put on hold and we as a collective will make a determination about proceeding with that, but that's our existing debt service. Transportation costs for buses and vans across the district. And then the final component is utilities, things like oil, electric, gas costs. So if you look at those components combined, that accounts for 86% of the district's budget. So when we look to areas where we can manage costs and where we have the ability to control costs directly, really only 14% of our budget is easily affected by changes that we can make. So that's kind of a quick snapshot. The next slide, so you may ask yourself the question, you know, you have expenses at 50 million, you have revenue showing at, you know, 48 million. How do you account for the difference in those numbers? And that's where we look at the general fund balance. So as Mr. Doherty mentioned, last year, we had projected that we were going to need to use a much larger portion of the fund balance in order to meet our expenses as a district. Fortunately, we had a number of things that had a positive impact on our financial position, which allowed us to not have to use as much of the general fund balance to cover our expenses. I think the positive trend that you can see here developing is that in 2016, 17, 17, 18, and then again in 18, 19, the fund balance was relatively flat. So that number covers around 4 million, slightly over 4 million. Our current projections for 1920 are that we anticipate that that again will remain flat. However, I think it's premature for us to be able to put a new bar on that graph. Obviously, we still have two more months of expenses across the district. In addition to that, we've not yet received all of our revenue sources at the state and federal level. We're at a position where we were last year. There's nothing that has changed. But at this point in time, the end position for this year for the general fund balance really is a direct reflection of the remaining expenses and the revenue that we'll receive. So what are the next steps? The next step for us are to stay very close and monitor the state and local revenue projections and adjust this budget accordingly. I can tell you that since the schools have closed, those of us in administration and the business office have been on numerous weekly webinars and training events to receive updates on both the state as well as the federal level to understand the financial impacts. Obviously, we're gonna need to make expense adjustments in order to respond to the revenue protection. And then we're gonna plan to come back on May 14th to review really the key highlights on both sides of that equation. Where have we saved money? Where have we trimmed? Where do we think that there are other areas that still need to be looked at? And where do we see ourselves going forward into 2021? So that's what I have for you this evening. I will turn that back over to Phil to ask any questions and open it up to the board for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Shana. And as we know, those items that we have available control over salary, wages, and benefits, and pension and healthcare, we expect to see increases in those each year. The state controls the pension requirement that we have to pay. That kept up over the years to a very large percentage of our payroll. The wage increases are locked in the contracts we have with the, with our employees. And the healthcare benefits, those can vary widely from year to year. Did anybody have any questions of Shana?
I would say just more comments. And so the budget that we're looking at appears like it's gonna get far worse than what we currently know. And so we need to make sure as a board, we're thinking about all different types of options to cut cost. And so nobody planned on this happening, obviously, but we're gonna need to react to it. And so the administration and whole collective team across our district did a very nice job over the last couple of years of maintaining this fund balance. And so this is something, obviously, folks have heard me talk about. They've been going to board meetings. And these are the days of why you need to carry at least a 10% fund balance. And so had we spent this thing down to a million or $2 million, it would really be a burn the furniture moment. And ultimately, it still could be a situation like that. But it puts us in a position to hopefully understand more about the state revenue, local revenue, and then look at where we can creatively work with our teams to cut costs wherever possible to try to get through this on the other side. So the only other thing that I would comment on, Shana, we just need to revisit that bond issuance at some point. You know, markets aren't particularly open in the municipal bond market, but that could happen here in the next couple of months. And that would be some assistance there. Obviously, we still have that roofing work that needs to get done. But that would free up a little bit of money on the capital project expense line for us. So that's something, you know, if you keep an eye on that, which I'm pretty sure you are.
Yes. Yep, I have been in contact with our bond counsel and, you know, they are ready to respond when we're ready. So the current signals that I'm getting is they are willing to, at this point, go forward. So I think we need to discuss probably at the next meeting what the current situation looks like and if you'd like to have them. And if you'd like to have them join us for that call, we could certainly do that and certainly include them in that dialogue.
I think we definitely should. If the rates are in a similar spot, that helps us and doesn't hurt us to actually pick up that fixed debt because we amortize it over 20 years. And so I'm definitely in favor of us moving forward if we can get similar terms.
Okay.
Agreed.
Very good.
Shane, I just want to thank you. Shane, I have a comment to dovetail on what John said. And thanks for doing the work, Shane. Really appreciate the numbers. I am concerned about the timeframe of when we have to vote. And I know the state is still mandating us to get this final budget by the end of June. And I know in the middle of June, I think we're looking to vote on this. A couple of points. I'm not sure we're going to have any answers of how we're going to get out of this economy over the next 30 days or get this economy or get back into the economy. So just in looking at this, and this is the first time that I ever want to say this, we have to be prepared to see how we're going to trim expenses. Because I know people out there have asked me, where are we going with the taxes? And I'll be honest with you, I'm not in favor of raising taxes. And even if we did raise taxes, it's not going to cover what I believe is going to be a big shortfall. Because we're looking at significant expenses. So we have to be able to consider how we're going to cut costs. And I think there's going to be a significance to this, and I'm worried about it. It's the first time, and I know we did a little bit of fund balance management, like you said, John. Unfortunately, I don't think that's going to be enough, but we'll see. And I'm not sure we're going to have enough time in the next 45 days to get good answers of where we're going with the revenues.
I think realistically, I think we're going to need to take a strategy where we have an extensive list of approaches to be able to shed cost. And I think we're going to need to be prepared to utilize those approaches as the revenue picture changes. So I think what we're going to need to do as a team is take some time to not only generate that list, which is a task that I actually have already started. So, you know, how do we look at, you know, where those cost control knobs are? And then we need to prioritize that list so that we understand, you know, where we would be able to respond and how quickly. Some of those things are going to take more time. So, you know, there are things that you can say, hey, we're going to eliminate, you know, purchasing XYZ. But the reality is you're not really going to see those savings until, you know, nine months from now or 12 months from now. You know, we have to, we're going to have to really look at the timing, I think also, of those different adjustments that we can make. I absolutely agree.
And the only other thing I'll add, I apologize for jumping back in again. The other thing is, is we spent years getting this to a relatively balanced budget, and we didn't anticipate this. And so we're going to need to make sure that we're not using our total fund balance in year one. And so to build on what you said, the fund balance goes through because we can't have a plan that uses $3 million or a $5 million fund balance. And so I appreciate the state using 2008 as a guideline. But the reality is in 2008, unemployment was 10% as a nation, and we're already at 17. We're in week four of unemployment claims. So unemployment is trending to be 2X at least what it was in '08. And I get it that we're trying to keep the economy in suspension. So if we intercept the medical stuff, maybe we get going faster. We need a plan that tells us we don't get going faster, how we're going to weather this for a two to five year type of time period.
That's what I was just going to say. I think we need to plan on a three-year plan. You know, I think that, and I think a lot is going to be telling in terms of the reaction time of the economy and what we start to see. But I think as we talk about what those next steps look like, I think that everybody needs to recognize that we're probably looking at about a three-year recovery.
So I just wanted to let you know that the superintendents of IU 18 meet every single day. And so any updates that come out of PDE, we are meeting together daily to discuss. This morning, we had a meeting with legislators. And we are going to schedule regular meetings with legislators to make sure that they understand what the decisions that they're making in Harrisburg and how they affect us. It was a very positive exchange this morning. I think some very good talking points came out of it. And I think that they will be as supportive as they can. But we want to make sure that they understand how their decisions are impacting our districts in particular. There was a continuity of education expansion grant. Mary Jean wrote it last week or two weeks ago and submitted it. And it was supposed to be a, to help us maintain continuity of education. We wrote the grant, we submitted it. Nobody in our IU, except for Wyoming area, got any kind of award. And Wyoming area got $10,000. So, I mean, it's just very, very frustrating. And $10,000 is not going to go far. When we get to my PowerPoint, you're going to see how many devices we've given out. And that depletes us when we return to school. How many of those will come back usable? I don't know. So there's lots of, there's lots of unknowns right now. But I want you to know that we're doing our part in terms of the, making sure the legislators understand how we're feeling and what our numbers are. So I shared with them our cyber numbers and my frustration over the lack of cyber charter reform that's happened. And that is a big drain. You know, most districts, if that changed, most districts could bring in a balanced budget. And, but it's just not happening. So.
It actually becomes more a risk to us now. Because if more people flock out to a cyber program, that makes those numbers that we're talking about today much more grim.
Well, and I want you to know too, that I want everyone in the community to know that we are having discussions about how do we, how do we make sure that we're providing and serving the needs of this community? I shared with my admin team an article from the New York Times that was an interview that Thomas Friedman did with another guy that, he interviewed him. And the man was talking about leadership. And one of the things that he said, and I sent it out because it struck me, is that right now, we're in the mode of saving lives. But the best organizations, the best leadership will pivot. And their focus will be on service. And their focus will be on how do we serve people now? That is, that is the position that this district is taking. And in terms of a budget, we will bring you improvements to this budget. I promise you that. I don't know what all of them will be, but we've made improvements in the last four years, and we will continue to make improvements. And we will do what we need to do. So I just, I want you to understand the reality of the situation, but I also, I also have hope.
We also have a pressure with two large taxpayers appealing their assessments. We lose considerable tax base. Which will be a large hit to the district revenues. Around $600,000 between the two of them, or one of them.
No, I thought, I thought just the one of them was $600,000.
Yeah, I think you're right, Hallie.
That is correct.
That's going to put a lot of pressure on our budget.
Yes.
I know if we get too many of these pressure points, then we'll have no choice but to be looking at cutting programs. I don't think anyone on the board wants to do that. But before long, we may get to that point.
Correct me if I'm wrong, because this is from like six or eight weeks ago. But I believe the amount of money just from that one tax entity was the equivalent of either our entire sports budget or our entire music budget for the district. Like, these are substantial funds that we're talking about, that, you know.
That is true.
That is correct.
Okay, we have three versions of budgets in front of us. We have a zero mil increase. We have a one mil increase, a two mil increase. Do I hear a motion for one of those to be adopted as a first proposed final budget?
Again, zero mil.
I second that.
We have a motion for zero mil.
We did.
Any more discussion? I'm sorry, Bill. Did you catch that?
Strictly a preliminary budget, nothing more.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
And required by law.
Are you ready for your roll call? Okay, Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you. Item four on the new business is a resolution to approve payment to transportation contractors of 90% of the state formula during closure per Act 13 requirements. Shane, do you want to make any comment on that, discuss that at all?
Sure, I'll just make a couple of brief comments. So there are two different components of recent legislation that we are working to comply with. The CARES Act, that was federal legislation that was passed several weeks ago, includes language that says that we should continue to make a good faith effort to pay not only our employees but our contractors during the time of closure in order to be recipient of any portion of the CARES Act stimulus. So that is a component of that. In addition, Act 13 was passed at the state level. And included in Act 13 is also some language around the continuity of payment to bus transportation contractors that districts can choose to continue to do that in an effort to maintain a driver complement during the period of closure. So we did some research, talked to other districts, our legal counsel, guidance from various input that we've received, and made the decision to make an adjustment for fuel. We, the legislation in Act 13 says that we can continue payment to provide continuity for personnel and fixed expense. So the adjustment was made for fuel. That 10% is a relatively accurate estimate of the total payment that is often spent for fuel expense. So again, this is our attempt to partner with our transportation contractors to their costs. On the flip side of that, the agreement, the requirement, is that contractors are required to provide documentation to the district during that time that they are continuing to pay their drivers. This was an effort to offset unemployment. So when this direction was allowed for in Act 13, the intent was that there was not, it was an either or, not a both. So in our case, when we made the decision to continue to pay our transportation contractors, they in essence agreed to continue to pay their drivers. And then those drivers would not be receiving unemployment. And the state has said through Act 13 that districts would continue to receive subsidy consistent with, as if the schools had continued to be in operation.
Thank you. We have a motion?
No, no, no.
Second.
Thank you, Billy. Any discussion? Okay, a roll call. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Stain.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Thank you. And myself is a yes. That's the limit of the new business. Heather, do you want to do your presentation?
Sure, I'm just going to share my screen. So can you guys see that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I want to minimize this. Okay, so this is part two of our, of our continuity of ed plan. And these are the updates. So I wanted to just start by letting you know that we assessed as of today. And today, the third wave of devices went out. As of today, we have 93% of our students in the primary center participating, either online or paper and pencil. Intermediate is 91. Seventh grade STEM academy is 89, and the high school is 81. I find those numbers extremely encouraging. That, because some kids just got devices today. So, so that's, that is kind of, those are very good numbers. We have deployed 548 devices. Shout out to our tech department and all the guys that have been helping them, other members of the admin team. This was a huge lift. And these guys got these machines ready and they got them distributed. So so far, we've given out that many iPads and Chromebooks. So we said phase one was building the plane in the air. And we said phase two was like eating soup with a fork, slow and messy. And now we're in phase three. And phase three will be better, not perfect, intentional, not lucky. So what I want you to know about phase three is we said we would get our related services and our outreach up and going. So we have started speech therapy, we have started OT. Those parents, most of them have been contacted. We ended up purchasing a platform to securely and confidentially provide those services. I will tell you that our teachers are working very hard to reach out to every single kid and that we're keeping a log of contacts and our attempts to contact. And that we're being very vigilant about trying to troubleshoot for parents and for children as to if they're not online or they're not participating, why not? Or if they're having difficulties with the platform or with the Chromebook, the devices. That we're providing also a lot of tech support and educational support. So right now, we opened back up the third marking period. So we did this on Monday. And we said that kids have until May 1st to submit any assignments that were missing for March 13. We need to close out the third marking period. And we're going to end it on March 13th, but we're giving kids, there were nine days left. We're giving kids 10 days to make up any missed work. And that we'll start calculating grades beginning on May 4th. And grades will be included in students' GPA. There was a question that came to me today about the high school and about seniors. We typically have calculated GPA for the honors banquet at the end of the third marking period. So that is no different than the way that we've done it in the past. So the third marking period grades will go in, or we'll start getting them run on May 4th. We're, well, all right. And there'll be more information on that. So if you're going to submit missing work, you can do an electronic submission by, to your teacher's email. You can take a picture of the document or you can send the document itself. Or we have placed drop boxes at the high school, right inside the vestibule. The doors are open, you must wear a mask. We don't want people piling up in the vestibule. But there are boxes there where if you need to drop something off, you may do that. So now we're getting ready to enter into phase four. And my quote is, we will do what's right, not what is easy. So planned instruction, which So planned instruction, which is new material, and also different parameters for how teachers may reach out to students will begin on May fourth, and that will continue until June fifth. Planned instruction is the next step of this, and what that means is that teachers can start helping students to understand new content, moving the course ahead. It will not be review and enrichment. It will be planned instruction. Now, I will tell you that we were planning this from the beginning, and that that new material is already built into our courses. The teachers are just waiting for me to flip the switch and tell them it was okay. So we will start doing this on May fourth. It will be new material, and that will continue through the end of the school year. Parents can continue to expect weekly newsletters and communication every Monday. This is the way that we've been doing it with the review and enrichment. We will continue doing it. I know there are teachers that are sending information via the portal. Some of them use the Classroom Dojo and the Remind app. That will continue the same. Again, I have to emphasize that the quantity of work is not designed to replicate in any way a normal eight AM to three PM school day. That's not what this is designed for, and your kids should not be spending that much time behind a screen. So this is the way we're gonna do fourth quarter grades. Begin planned instruction on May fourth. All students are expected to participate. All means all. And we have ninety percent, close to, participating now. So we're gonna up our efforts to get the rest of the kids involved, either paper, pencil, or online. And participation will be tracked. So we're gonna know how much kids are participating and how much of the assignment is getting done. There will be no final exams, and grades for the quarter will be pass/fail. Grades for the fourth quarter will not, will not be calculated into the GPA. So what does pass/fail mean? The expectations for a passing grade in the fourth quarter will be seventy percent completion of the work assigned after May fourth. So it's after May fourth. The kids who have not logged on yet are not gonna be penalized, all right? But they will, so beginning May fourth, that will begin the fourth marking period, and we expect kids to participate and complete seventy percent at a minimum, seventy percent of that work. The Fusion C three kids, which is our cyber program that we run in-house, they're working in their original cyber courses as we speak, and they'll continue to do so for the remainder of the school year. The end of the school year calendar that was approved, was approved for June fifth, and this board has made a decision that it will end the school year on June fifth. Part of what has happened at the state level is that we will not be penalized. They will not hold us to the one hundred eighty days and the nine hundred and ninety hours at the high school. So we're gonna wrap this up on June fifth. We're still looking at planning extended school year activities for those students who are eligible for that. I wanted to let you know that we did another very large food distribution on Tuesday night, and I want to assure the community that we understand the need, and that we will continue to do these as frequently as we possibly can. Right now, we're doing them once a week, as frequently and for as long as we possibly can. We're looking at other funding sources and other options that we might have. So I just want to assure the community that we do plan to continue that through the summer. Still unknown. This was the list I put up two weeks ago, and I'm happy to say we're starting to cross some things off of this. So graduation is still up in the air. It's still too early to tell what that might look like, but we will celebrate the class of 2020. I assure you. Kindergarten registration is still up in the air, and of course, as Shane said, the financial impacts of all of this are unknown at this time. We continue to ask for your patience and your respect and your kindness, and we remind you that the kids are watching. And we ask you all to be safe. I want to walk you through some helpful hints here on, oh, I'm gonna stop this for a second. And I'm gonna go back down here, and I'm gonna pull up.
I really would like to have a cigarette.
Really, Laurie?
Did y'all hear me?
Yep.
All right, so let me try this a different way, I'm sorry. There we go. All right. So when you log on to our website, you see these banners, and the tech department has just been like trying to put the most recent information on the top. This is how you get help, and this is how you figure out where, oh, I'm sorry. Mary Jean just said I'm not sharing. I'm not sure how to do this. So you guys cannot see that.
You can see the last slide.
Yeah, all right. I'm stop share. I want to put this. This is what I want to share. If I close out the other one, I'm gonna, oh, okay. I apologize, you guys. I am. Okay, here, I'm gonna do this. Now, can you see the website?
Yes.
Okay, I'm still learning. I'm learning every day. All right, so this is what comes up. I want you to, I want you to scroll down, and I want you to click on this link. T A S D Learning Opportunity in Community Training. That will take you to that page. And again, you see all of this stuff, that's all these recent announcements, but when you come down here, the gray bar says T A S D Learning Opportunity in Community Training. If kids click on the community training, or parents click on the community training, there are, it walks you through how to log in. So this is where all of the, there's a link for parents to help parents get in the portal. But you have to click on that, the link in the black bar, which will take you to this page, and then there are frequently asked questions, instructions for logging on to Chromebooks. This is really super, super easy. So I wanted to just show people how to get there. Now, as far as my PowerPoint, I just have one more thing to show you. I'm not gonna fight with this. Okay, so there is a list of email addresses that I wanted to give people. If you need help with the Chromebook, then you email chromebookhelp@tasd.net. If you need help with the Edmentum platform, you email edmentum or edmentumhelp@tasd.net, all right? So if you need a Chromebook, you write needchromebook@tasd.net. Or if you want printed materials, then you can put preferpaper@tasd.net. So those are three of the emails that we will make sure that we get pushed up on the website, and so that they're easy to find, they'll be on that page. And at this time, we can take questions. If people have questions from the public, they should go and they should write their name in the chat screen. So you go down and you hit the chat button, and you type your name, and then we will allow you to ask your question.
Heather, I just have one comment on the at-home learning, and I think you and I spoke about this. Where we live, the internet is extremely slow, so when my kids try to load a video or load a program, it takes a long time. So there, and as you know, my kids go down to the parking lot to use the internet down at the school, and the IT department has been very helpful, helping the kids log on either to the Chromebook devices or to their own devices, and that really helps cut down on time.
Yes. So that is an option. Also, I think I mentioned this before, we have ordered a hundred hotspots that may help some families out, but there's no guarantee. There's no guarantee that if we give you a hotspot that that's gonna make any difference whatsoever. So we're doing the best that we can. This was one of the things we talked about with the legislators today, is that, you know, the cities have a lot more connectivity than do the rural areas, and so there were districts that were able to go to direct instruction immediately, but we are not one of them. And I feel like it was necessary to try to get as many kids online before we went to planned instruction as possible, that that was the equitable thing to do, and we'll continue to try.
I heard Governor Wolf has some magic Wi-Fi bus he's gonna send out to the country schools and drive it around.
Nobody knows where that is.
Oh, okay.
We've been looking for it, but we haven't found it yet. So Bill is right, though. You can come to our parking lots, and you can pull in, and you can get better connectivity. I had a call today from a young man, a student, and he was concerned about that same thing, Bill. And so, you know, our teachers, I do think, are aware, and I do think that they are trying to work with stuff that is doable. But I recognize that some of the stuff that they've built in is video, and, you know. I think that seventy, that pass/fail for the fourth marking period gives kids a little breathing space, too. They can't do the assignment because that's what it is. They're really, they're not gonna be penalized, so. I don't see any.
Couple of questions here for.
Okay, sure.
The first, I just want to say, recently I've had the opportunity to help some people in other districts trying to get something set up, and it made me much more appreciative of the fact that our district seems to have gone above and beyond to be easy, accessible, and accommodating for our families. I have not seen or heard people complaining about being given a runaround. They need an answer, they get an answer. So I really am appreciative of that, and when you talk about service and serving the community, I think you guys are all doing a great job with that.
Thank you.
I had a question about the attendance. When you say seventy percent participation, because this came up in a conversation today, is that on specific school days, or is that a whole number of days?
No, we can't, no, it is not on specific school days. We're gonna be able to see when kids are logging in and doing work, and that tallies it itself. So I recognize that you may have four kids working on one device. So we're not gonna say it's Monday through Friday, absolutely not. That's one of the reasons that we've stuck to it the way that we have, that the, you know, a lot of the information comes out on Monday, and you have all week to work on it.
The devices that we've handed out, you said it was five hundred and forty-eight. Are some of those new purchases, or is all of that current stock?
That is all current.
Okay. I'm guessing we haven't yet, but at some point, we'll be making decisions about any of the summer camp type programs. Are they already canceled, or are we holding off on that, or?
Well, no, they are not already canceled, but I will tell you that the extended school year is being planned to be done virtually through the IU. We run our program through the IU, and they're gonna plan to do it virtually. So I don't, I don't know that we're gonna be able to do like camp invention and the stuff that we have been able to do all summer, these past summers. I'm just taking that one day at a time.
I promise, only two more. High school scheduling, is there a plan for that?
Yes, yes, there is.
And I'm guessing in one of our next meetings next month, we'll be starting to talk about the mystery of the 2021 calendar. We don't even know if we'll still be dealing with this.
I apologize. I just did not have time to get to that, and.
I was just asking it publicly because, I mean, I kind of figured that was the answer right now, but I've been asked about it, so.
Yeah.
And it's been.
This is a really challenging time, and I have to prioritize my work, and I just could not get to that.
No.
The only other comment that I would make, I'd want to thank Heather and the administrative team, Mary Jean, Shane. I know John Chappalsky, I haven't seen him, but I know he's been in the buildings a lot, working real hard. And I have the opportunity to live right near the schools, and I see Todd a lot. And so I know that a lot of the administrative folks have been working hard, as well as some of our teachers being real creative on the work they're doing during this time. So, you know, I've seen some of them reaching out directly to students to make them feel better and try to do things like that. Each of us lives in a different household. For some of us, obviously, this is not too bad, and for others, it's just a terrible thing to have parents losing their job and being laid off and furloughed. So I want to thank everybody for the work that's being done. We're gonna learn a lot from this, and so ultimately, we're gonna come out on the other side. We're being able to handle, I think, much better interruptions in education for things like snow, breaks, and stuff like that. So I know we'll find a way to make things better going forward, but just thank you. That starts at the top, Heather, so I see your car here really late on a lot of days, so I want to thank you for that, as well as the rest of the team.
They are a great team, and our teachers have joined in, and they're gonna make this the best it can possibly be. I have no doubt in my mind.
They're all committed to that, for sure.
I know they are. I know they are. We meet, we meet all the time, and I can tell you that they're they're an impressive group. So I think there was one person that put their name in the chat box. It was Tiffany. Okay, I can't, sorry. Okay, Becky Talcot is the first one up. Becky, can you, can you hear me?
Okay, yes. Just had a quick question about the pass/fail for the year. If a student wasn't doing too good in the first and second quarter, and really needed the third and fourth quarter grades to pass, if they're not getting an actual grade in fourth quarter, how will it be determined if they pass for the year?
So then the third quarter grade, we would average the three quarters.
The three quarters, okay, thank you.
Tiffany? Tiffany, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. My question is regarding children that are under IEP. I know my little one is having issues now, struggling with the enrichment program you're out now, but when the grades start getting graded, I spoke to his teacher, Dr. Bach, and she didn't realize that he was struggling through this. So is there anything going on for those children who have IEPs?
Yes, and we will continue to provide as much support through the learning support teachers, and we have the ability, the teachers have the ability to modify some of those assignments. So I'm glad that you reached out, because they need to know that.
Yeah, because a lot of the teachers don't realize that the children are struggling, and they say they have this self-button that you can press, and it'll read to you, but the children, some of the platforms that's out there, it does not give you that option. So it's got like a ton of reading, which my child has a reading disability, so he's really struggling on that subject.
Tiffany, I'm gonna suggest that you use that Edmentum Help email address that I gave out earlier, because I'm not sure why it's not, why it's not reading it to him.
No, most of the subjects it will read, but there's certain passages, it does not give you that option for reading to you.
Okay, all right. So I'm gonna have Mary Beatty reach out to you tomorrow, and she'll give you a call, and you can explain to her what we need to do, and we can communicate that back to the teachers.
I greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Do we have any more?
Yes, there's. Yes, there's one more.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, it's Judy. I was just, had a question about, is there a possibility that the classes will be going like a live version of them at all? For the fourth quarter?
So that, I'm leaving that up to the teachers. There is, there is a lot, there's some interest in teachers like having morning meetings or, but, but the idea of going live from 8 to 3, absolutely not. Teachers may schedule something and, and, but, but we're not doing any kind of 8 to 3, first period, second period, third period thing. This is a really stressful time, so no. So a teacher might schedule something, like once a week, and they might do it for 15 minutes and if kids can get in, great, if they can't, that's okay. But that's entirely up to the teacher.
So there'd be no like live instruction going on? It's all gonna be done via the students doing it on their own and not with any teacher help?
No, they're, they're, the teachers will, they have already established, we've asked them to establish office hours where you can get ahold of them and that they will help and they can talk a kid through something. But I'm just telling you, my expectations for our teachers, who have varying degrees of comfort using a platform like this, is that they will choose what they want to do and I will provide them with parameters for that. But I am not requiring it, no.
Okay, I'm just one, I'm wondering because, you know, I know there's students struggling with the pretty much learning after, on their own, I guess you could speak, you know, classified as-
Right.
That instruction, you know, to go through whether it be math or language or-
Right. And so you, my, my suggestion would be that you reach out to the teacher and you ask to set up a, like a private phone call or whatever with that teacher so that they can help. They can share their screen, okay?
I just wanted to see what our, understand what it was gonna look like so we can progress
Okay.
with the instruction.
But step one is reaching out to the teacher.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Leah? Lee? Lee, can you hear me? Is there a Lee that wanted to speak? Lee? I, I'm, I'm not sure, Phil, I'm-
Okay.
Okay. I think that's it.
Heather, I do have a question before we adjourn the meeting. Did you hear back yet from John Addy on the special ed waivers and the paperwork you sent down to him to review?
Yes, and that is in the works and it is being handled as it currently, right? We're working on that, sending it out, getting that language in to NORAP, et cetera.
Okay, good, thanks.
Lee says that she's still muted.
Lee says she's still muted. She's unmuted now, Lee, can you hear me? Lee, can you hear me? Colleague, will she text you her question?
She's writing something.
Okay, thank you.
Do, do you want the 70% done each week the work is assigned or is it an overall for the marking period?
I would say it's an overall for the marking period. Okay? Again, families are dealing with different things right now, I'm not gonna-
It's gonna be obvious to anybody involved if a family's trying or not trying at all. And I don't think anybody who's trying is gonna, you know, it's not going to be a question. Do we know what happens if the kid, if we have a kid that just out and out doesn't participate? You know, what, what the outcome of that is?
I, I'm not prepared to answer that yet, only because I, I wanna get everybody online or everybody paper and pencil and we're making progress. We're up 10% over where we were last week, so, or two weeks ago. So I, I feel like, all right, we just did another wave of distribution, so I'm optimistic.
Heather, the special teachers, the music and those folks, how are they making out?
I think that the electives went out Monday. And I think, and I, you, I will also say to the board that all of the specials at the K to 7 level are all things for kids to do offline. So we, we don't want them behind a screen. So that was, I thought that was really good of special teachers to, to do that. High school electives are up and running and I'm hearing good things, especially with the music ones. And so, good, I, I think that our, our teachers stepped up and, and they got the stuff out there, so.
Wonderful.
Are the, are the specials being tracked along with the 70%? I don't know.
I don't know how we would know that, right? Like, cause it's not, it's not in the Admentum system. So I think they're important, they're enriching and I encourage kids to do them also because it's a break and it's something different. But I don't know how we would track them, especially K to 7.
It was asked of me, so.
Heather, I have a question. I understand what you're saying, that, you know, we have to keep all the teachers going and they're giving our kids work and everything. Are, is there a way that our high, our principals in all of our schools and Mary Jean, yourself, Mary Beatty, that they're actually tracking of the teachers making sure everybody's doing, sending their work? There's a way that you're tracking all that?
Yes. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Phil?
Guess we have none.
Phil?
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, Bill Wyder's trying to space.
Hey Phil?
Yes, Bill.
Is, is, still online?
Yes.
Uh, a while ago, a while ago, we did the fuel oil quota thing. With the way the situation is, I wonder if all the schools got together, if that could be changed, the way the oil price has been dropping and to help us out.
So what we bid on is gallons. So the gallons, though, we have, we have reevaluated and did not feel that the number of gallons needed to be adjusted.
I don't mean the gallons, I mean, we bid on a fixed price, correct?
That is correct. So I don't know that we were given any opportunity to adjust that price. I think that what was adjusted, adjustable was, they did open it up to making adjustments for the actual gallons. Now, that number is on the lower side. I will go back, we can ask that question, Bill, but I do not know if there is any opportunity to reopen that up at this time.
I'm just looking at the barrel price of oil and if all the schools got together who was in this pool, if they would rework numbers to help us out.
I, I don't know what would incentivize them to do that, Bill. They're hurting too and we're supposed to make our contracts whole.
And they've never done it in the past.
Yeah, but the price has never jumped around and jumped, dropped like it has in the last two, three weeks.
That's the risk we take though when we sign these fuel contracts.
From deal with oil futures, from deal with oil futures, you know, for 20 years, they're not gonna budge. I mean, you take the good with the bad. If oil tripled in price, we'd expect to pay what we're gonna pay.
Yeah.
They're not gonna let you out of them. It was just a thought.
Yes.
Yeah, it was a good thought. If we could lower our values though, Shane, we should probably lower the gallons as much as we can.
Yeah, I can't imagine that they'll do that, but if they do, we can lower it to zero.
I, I, I think I might have tried that, the fast, it doesn't work.
I, we, definitely it's worth asking a question to them. I mean, all they're gonna do is say no, but if, if they said, yeah, you can adjust down by 10% even, we should take it.
Sure. Any other questions?
Yes, I have one more question. How-
Hey Lori.
On, how are you tracking the paper, the, the paper and pencil work being done? Are they dropping it back off in the Dropbox or how are you tracking that?
Um, we're tracking participation on, on that and the number of kids that are actually doing it. But we will, as of May 4th, we will have a Dropbox situation. And then, but we don't right now, Lori, because this is all enrichment and review.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Thank you guys all so much.
Thank you.
See ya.